Thank you, Dr. Rainey. I'd like to call the meeting to order for September eighth, two thousand and twenty five, Board Meeting of the Huntington County Community School Board of Trustees. And item A three, call to order, Mrs. Gray.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mrs. Heim?
Here.
Mr. Carl? Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Move on to A five, revision of the agenda. Mr. Trout, do we have any revisions today?
No revisions this evening, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Onto item B one, public comment from visitors. I don't have anyone signed up to speak this morning, but if anyone would like to address the board, please come up and state your name and I'll probably have you sign this as well. No one coming forward. Move on to C one. Two thousand and twenty six budget workshop. Mrs. Smith?
Good evening. My favorite part, budgets. You guys know how I love the numbers and love budgets, along with Mr. Wall, of course. This evening, we bring to you the two thousand and twenty six budget workshop. And, oops, maybe. Is it delayed? Oops, did you do that? Okay. Of course, our agenda for this evening is to always make sure that we're, you know, looking at our objectives, our goals, our school's mission and those type of things. We look at the budget calendar. We're doing the major budgeted funds and we'll go through those and talking about all the gathering of the data and then review comparisons. And then tonight is the first of three major steps that's required for the budget. The first one, of course, is to hold this budget workshop and then later for action item, ask for permission to advertise what's called a Form Three Notice to Taxpayers, the Bus Replacement Plan and the Capital Projects Plan. That is the first step. The second step is within a minimum of ten days, we can go longer, hold a public hearing for those budgets that are advertised. And then last but not least, the third step is the adoption of the budget. So you'll see those over these next three board meetings for the public and the board. And then, of course, our goal is to make sure that we are maintaining our expenditures within our revenue streams provided unless directed otherwise from the board and, of course, focusing our programs and services for student achievement by providing competitive compensation packages to obtain and retain employees. So we start out the budget process. We receive information, you'll see it on the screen there, is a budget calendar that we received from the Department of Local Government Finance, who all of our budget information goes through. And they give us the deadlines of all the state statutes of each one of those three steps that we just seen and what their maximum deadline date is. And we work backwards from that and look at your board workshops, your board calendar, all your board meetings, and then we place that in line with, before the due dates. And then that's, this is what you'll see in the board approved this, I think it was in June, for these major steps. And you'll see the three major steps highlighted there this evenings and then the next two board meetings for the public hearing and the adoption of the budget. And then by the end of the year, the Department of Local Government Finance, DLGF, certifies the budgets for the next calendar year. So these are calendar year budgets, January through December. We start with that process. You'll see February and then the real meat and potatoes come, starting in May, June, July and August. And then we go from there and up here to all the statute deadlines and dates. So with the school corporation, we utilize, of course, public funds. We are a cash basis accounting. So just like you think of at home, money in, money out. So you have your revenue and your expenditures. That's what we call a cash basis. There's no accrual accounting or any of that for the majority of the school districts in Indiana. Any of the school districts are over fifteen thousand students, they are now required to have accrual accounting, but there's only handful throughout the state. The rest of us are all on cash basis accounting. We have what we call fund accounting. So we have major budgeted funds that we do through the DLGF. There are other funds that we have throughout the district such as grants and from the federal, state and local levels, also including food service and any kind of referendums that schools may have. We do not have that here, but other school districts do. And then, of course, the budgets that have to go through the DLGF. So here are the major budgeted funds that have to go through the DLGF. You'll see the Education Fund, which was new in two thousand and nineteen, that was developed from the old General Fund. And then we also have the New Operations Fund that was also created in two thousand and nineteen. That is a partial of the old General Fund, two categories of the four that used to be in General Fund, and then also the old Capital Projects Fund and Transportation Operating and Bus Replacement Funds. All those were rolled into the New Operations Fund. And then other districts have miscellaneous funds such, of course, debt service. Debt service that we handle all of our larger projects and things like that where we sell bonds and leases to finance those. And then a lot of districts now do have a rainy day, we do here, and then other districts that might have referendums, an operating referendum, capital referendums and safety referendums. And then where does all of our revenue come from? We have two main pots of revenue that we receive in schools. One is based on student enrollment. It's our state tuition, AKA basic grant. There's all different kinds of words, names that people use it for. And that is from our enrollment, which comes from our average daily membership count. So that is our main revenue that comes in our Education Fund. All of it's aimed towards, straight toward education. And then our other funds have local property taxes and other miscellaneous taxes that come from the revenues that we receive from the local property taxes. And then expenditures that are allowed, when you think of the Education Fund, you think of what does it take to educate that directly, that child? So in the schools, all the employees in each one of the schools all come out of the Education Fund. The other funds, operations, when you think of the overall arching operations of a district such as the superintendent's office, the business office, technology, transportation, all those different departments come out of the Operations Fund. And of course, we already talked about the debt service and then referendums, if anyone had any referendums for that. And then all this starts, like we said, in the late spring, early summer. And there's a lot of ma- major stakeholder input from all the different departments around the district, including, of course, business services, transportation, human resources, operations, the teachers, you know, we have to think of negotiations of what we might have already committed for negotiations, principals input, you know, board input, all the directors of education and secondary. All those different departments have input in the major parts of the budget. And then when we're gathering this data, this is the things that we have to look at, is we look at that enrollment. Remember, we talked about enrollment for the average daily membership. So what we do is we look at the trends and we see how we're doing and what we've done in the past and then what we might project for the future. So for, there's two enrollment counts, there's two ADM counts that constitute our funding for each of the six months of the calendar year, of the fiscal year, actually. The fall enrollment, which is done on October first, and then you'll see the trends here, the actuals from two thousand and seventeen on, and then just estimating basically a flat enrollment or ADM for this year. And then we also have the spring enrollment, which is, they call it spring, but it's February first. So I don't know about that. I think they're a little off on, you know, Mother Nature when spring actually happens, but that's what they call it, spring ADM. And you'll also see, see those numbers, the historical trends for our enrollment trends here at Huntington. And then next you'll see the basic grant, the tuition support. When we get those numbers, we have a simulation inside the Department of Education that we can go and put our numbers in. So if we knew we were growing exponentially or decreasing, we can play with those numbers to see what that expected revenue or anticipated revenue would be in our Education Fund and we build the budget upon that. So here you'll see the historical tax rate history for, since two thousand and nineteen. So you'll see our tax rate here for Huntington and you'll see that start to stabilize more in these last couple of years and plan to do so in the future. Now with the new legislative session and all the different criteria, you'll see a lot of districts trying to level out between the tax rate and the levy. So it'll be a joint combination now, looking at the assessed valuations as they've been going up and then stabilizing. And now they went back up again and you'll see that on the, on the next couple of slides, and then looking at the actual tax rate. So when you're, if you look at that green box there of how you anticipate what your property tax will be, it's your assessed valuation times the tax rate divided by a hundred because it's hundreds of thousands. And then that's how you figure out what your property tax is. So in the olden days, before you had the bad property tax caps and all those things that affected your taxes, it was very easy to keep your tax rate stable. Now that the assessed valuation on the next screen has been jumping around, you'll see that there. You'll see it was pretty stable, one, four, five percent. That is normal. All of a sudden, we jump up to fifteen percent, oop, then let's go back down to less than four percent, oop, let's go back up to thirteen percent. Now for this year, we just received a couple of weeks ago, it's ten percent increase. So when you're doing that, it's hard to figure out to stabilize that for our community because of that assessed valuation going up. A lot of people in the past would go, darn it, these schools, they're, they're charging us everything, my property taxes keep on going up. They didn't realize that we were stabilizing the tax rate, but the assessed valuation bouncing around like that is what constitutes an influx in their property taxes that they actually pay. So hopefully in the future, that will calm down and won't be such a roller coaster and it'll be easier to maintain regulatory taxes for our community. But we're still in that volatile state there where you see that just jumping back and forth from two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty six.
So I wasn't going to ask you a question, but I thought it'd be a perfect time on this particular screen.
Nope, perfect.
So Senate Bill One, most of that stuff takes effect in two thousand and twenty eight. What is going to be affected by that? It's going to be a cap in our, our tax rate, but also is it business personal property somehow affected in there too?
Yes, it is. Those two main funds that it could affect will definitely affect Operations Fund. And then for anyone else with their debt service fund, also, they're talking about that, any kind of revenue sharing that you have to do because of those bills and the tax caps. So that combination will affect our Operations Fund, which we talked about, is our main fund for the overall arching operations. That's our bus replacement, our facilities, I'll talk about that in a little bit later, of our upgrades and those type of things. So that unknown, because they have not been able to project what those, that impact will be for the districts. In Indianapolis, Marion County, there's a couple in that area, of course, that started this year. So we have property tax, different regulations for Marion County that started before the majority of them start in two thousand and twenty eight. But until then, that's why we'll have to be very careful and very strategic in how we're doing our budgets and our future projections.
I, I just call out because I know in two thousand and twenty five, we never completely understood where that thirteen percent came from because it was an oddity of the rest of the states.
Exactly.
That, a majority of that was the business person property from TESUS. And that's why I was specifically asking that. So we may be in the reverse option.
Exactly.
When two thousand and twenty eight comes around and they, we actually may see a shrinking in that. So just keep an eye on it.
You could see your assessed valuation really tank instead of increasing until they stabilize that over those couple of years with all those credits and that's happening for the personal property, the extra credits that they're doing for the property tax caps, all that. It's going to be interesting from two thousand and twenty eight on. So we'll see, we'll have another biennium by then. So we'll, you know, right now, we already know and I'll, I'll show you that in a little bit. We don't have a lot of new revenue. A lot of districts are actually going negative. So it wasn't the original projections that they stated. And when they said, oh, across the average of Indiana, it's two percent. That is not correct. Once the numbers are run on that funding formula, that simulation that I talked about, there's a lot of districts that are actually negative. So we have to watch that. We have to be prepared of what that will mean for our districts. Once those estimates come in from all those property tax, they're supposed to have that to us, but we know how that is. We don't know the timing for that or, you know, what that impact will be yet.
And I will just mention that, that TESUS personal property was a specific choice by the City Redevelopment Commission. They did TIF the, the land out there and the physical buildings, but they made a choice to help pass some of that through when they decided not to TIF the business person property to help the school corporation and some of those others. So while it was nice now, then the rules, of course, get changed on us. So it just was one of those things where, as I learned more about it, it was nice. And they did make a specific decision to try to help the school corporation out when they did that. But now we're going to get hit by something else.
And of course, the lit, remember the lit. We have, that's over, you know, going to be over a seven hundred thousand dollar impact for the district that we're losing out on those taxes. So not every school corporation in Indiana has lit taxes, but you guys do. So that'll be a huge impact for you. So I'm hoping the next biennium that we'll get some increases to maybe offset some of that. If not, then we will be short right off the top, seven hundred thousand dollars. So then we're going to compare how the numbers shook out, looking and comparing against the two thousand and twenty five budget order. So not the two thousand and twenty five advertised because, of course, we always advertise higher because once they shake out the numbers, we want to make sure that we've advertised high enough. Because if for some reason we thought, okay, we're going to go as close to the penny as we can, and then they run the figures and it's lower, I mean, higher, then we only get the lowest number. So that's why we advertise a little higher so, to allow for those variations. So you'll see here the difference of the local tax, the local sources, the state sources, and of course, the other. So of course, you see here, the biggest part, the forty one point five million dollars, it's anticipated for that tuition support that we talked about. And so that just has a slight increase. And after we know our ADM, then of course, that could change, you know, up or down. And once that ADM is certified in October, like I said, hmm, that's October, but we have to have the budgets done now. So we get our little crystal balls out and we try to get as close as we can and then come up with our budgets. So you'll see here, the difference between the two years is about a half a million dollars that we're projecting the difference for two thousand and twenty six advertised budgets for revenue. And then you'll see our expenditures, the same thing here, where in Education Fund, want to bring to light that, when you look at that percent of the fund on the right-hand side, like we indicated, Education Fund is what it takes to directly aim toward educating those students. So you'll see over ninety, almost ninety seven percent is salaries and benefits in the Education Fund. So if they play with the funding formula anymore, of course, what does that affect? People, people directly in our classrooms. So we have to be very careful of that and we have to watch. That's why it's very important for these budgets and for us to look at it as, you know, a board, superintendent, CFOs, you know, the community, so we can educate the community on what that means going forward. Also wanted to bring up, I did forget, in the, the revenue side for the Education Fund, in the funding formula this year, when they were talking about that two percent. Now remember, before we got our tuition support, then we also got curriculum materials dispersment. Remember hearing that the last couple of years for me? Now, we won't have two different mechanisms, two pots of money. They moved this pot of money into the funding formula one time. It'll just stay there, we'll never ever get a separate dispersment. So that two percent was camouflaged by them rolling in this extra amount, which I think was, you know, seven hundred and some thousand dollars for you guys. So now that's built into the formula, so we won't get another distribution. It's just built in there. So it was kind of like a smoke and mirrors for your supposed two percent. So you ended up less than a half a percent when it comes down to it because those two were added together and you'll no longer get a separate dispersment. So we'll have to be careful and with that also with our curriculum materials and that. Now that it's built in the regular budgets and not a separate fund or separate funding for that, it's just rolled in. So we'll have to build that during the process of the Education Fund from now on, get with the directors of curriculum and make sure that they, they have built into the budgets what they need for the next adoptions and such. You know, we have adoptions, you know, every so many years and some are higher than others. So that'll be a, a strategy to make sure that we're building that into the education budget going forward. So you'll see here, the, the comparison between the budgets that we're advertising, about a, a million dollars more almost, the assessed valuation difference there from two thousand and twenty five and two thousand and twenty six. And then, of course, there's no levy in Education Funds, there's no property taxes, therefore no rate. So that's why that's zero. And then next you'll see our debt service fund. So our debt service fund is a property tax need-driven fund. So whatever we sell for our bonds or leases is what we have to pay out. So we get the money twice a year. The main times is December and June. And then we also pay what's called an amortization schedule, just like your mortgage that you pay at home, that you get a mortgage for thirty years and you got a little schedule that tells you, you know, oh, I gotta pay, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for thirty years. We get the same thing for the debt services for the bonds and leases and we make those payments in those same two months, June and December, for the life of that bond or lease to pay it back. So all that's built into this debt service fund revenue. So it's an estimate on what we think we need from the rest of the amortization schedules or any future borrowing that we might do. Here at Huntington, the last couple of years, we've been doing general obligation bonds. So you know, we're in the process of that for two thousand and twenty five also. And then next you'll see the long-range debt service schedule. So this is the schedule that I take, that I develop from those amortization schedules. So you can see every single bond on there and you can see the payments for, for now until some of them drop off. And as you know, as some drop off, then of course, we put others in the place so we can continue with our facilities and our, any kind of replacements, repairs, all those different types of things and projects that we know that we have to do along the way. Without having a referendum here, we utilize the, the debt service fund to its full tax rate. We're right underneath the forty cents. We promised, of course, you and the community that we would keep it under that forty cents so it didn't have to go out for a vote or anything. So that's what we do is we maintain that. And as they build our budget, then we actually put that in the paperwork that we will not go above that, you know, right underneath the forty cents. So we make sure that we don't go over that and keep our commitment, which the board has wanted to do over the last several years, especially since that's changed with the, with the legislative session on the requirements and the rules for whatever rate you end up with. So here you'll see the two thousand and twenty five budget order. You'll see that the budget and assessed valuation, the levy, which is higher just because we inflated it, you know, for the budget publications and advertising. But then you'll see there with the rate that we make sure, that three nine nine nine, we make sure it never goes over the forty cents. So what that means, when I'm talking about that rate and how we kind of freeze it, even if they calculate more than that, when I talked about that earlier, you know, usually we'll advertise higher. So then it will, you know, adjust for that. But the debt, we do not do that. So that's why you see that point three nine nine nine, even if it calculates higher, they will not go over that rate that we publish. So we do that by design. Then you'll see our Operations Fund, which is our other main fund, like our Education Fund, just on the opposite side. And you'll see here on the two thousand and twenty five budget order and the two thousand and twenty six advertised and a little over one point six million dollars. And this includes that transfer that we do from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund, just a reminder on what that means. So that was when they created in two thousand and nineteen, the new Education Fund and the new Operations Fund. Those four categories that I talked about from the old General Fund, when they split those, they moved two of those into the Operations Fund and two of them stayed and went into the new Education Fund. But the revenue did not move with those from the old General Fund. So they still have not split that revenue for us. We still get only the revenue in the Education Fund to support those other two categories that moved to the Operations Fund. So why they haven't split that, I have no idea. I figured that would only be a couple of years and then they would go ahead and do it for us, basically. But no, we have to manually transfer that and we can transfer up to fifteen percent. We average between thirteen, five and fourteen percent here at Huntington. So we're well underneath that fifteen percent threshold that they, they want everybody to stay under. So if you, you know, go over that fifteen percent, then you end up on this list and it's public and all this good stuff. But here at Huntington, we don't have to worry about that since our percentage that we do transfer is lower than that fifteen percent. Will they do it in the future? I don't know. I haven't heard them talk about it in the last couple of years, which I thought was odd. But until then, there is Indiana Code that states that yes, you transfer less than fifteen percent to cover those two categories. And we do that mainly two times a year for those funds. So with the Operations Fund, it has what's called a maximum levy calculation. And what that means is we can only receive up to a maximum calculation of the property taxes in this Operations Fund. So there is a percentage that they do through the legislative session that tells approximately what that growth potion will be, quotient will be. And for two thousand and twenty six, it's four percent. So you'll see this calculation here of the maximum amount that we will be able to collect for our Operations Fund. However, remember, this Operations Fund also is affected by the property tax caps. So this is the maximum, but then in December, they take away from our distribution, the property tax cap portion. So we don't receive the full amount to begin with. So first we have a maximum, then that maximum is even reduced when we get our actual distribution of taxes in December. So it's kind of like a double whammy. So this is the one, if you remember, during the legislative session, they were trying to say zero percent growth. And everybody came unglued and we go, how can you even do that? It already has a double, you know, limitation on it. How can you do no increase whatsoever? There, you know, even the four percent doesn't cover, you know, the cost of living increase. But thank goodness, that got pulled out at the eleventh hour and they went ahead with the four percent and keeping that in as status quo. So hopefully that'll stay, you know, at least that in the future. Of course, you know, CFOs would want it to, to go up, to go with the cost of living, but definitely not down. So we'll keep you informed on that. So then this is the same as we did for the Education Fund where we broke it out between the objects there, salaries and benefits. You'll see the difference here. Remember, it was ninety seven percent of salaries and benefits. In operations, it's, you know, forty three percent for salaries and benefits. And then you'll see all the other things that come out of the Operations Fund. It is, you know, the bus replacement, it is utilities, all those other overarching things that, to operate the, the school district. that, to operate the, the school districts. So you'll see that for twenty-three million dollars there. And then next we have, when we were talking about the circuit breaker impact. So this is interesting. So usually we get this report every year. If you notice, the one that's circled still says 2025. Why would it say 2025 if we're doing a 2026 budget? Well, it still says pending, not, and did not give us our figure. However, when we go to put it into the computer, all these numbers go into the DLGF site. And that's where you'll see an estimate that actually showed up on the Form Three of three point three million dollar impact, even though they don't have this estimate report in yet and it still says pending. So why, we don't know, which is weird that it went up that high, that it shows it on one paperwork, but it does not show it on their calculation and still says pending. So that is the majority of Indiana. Now, there are a couple of districts where they did do their calculation and have their calculation sheet, but that's like, I would say probably five percent of Indiana received theirs and everyone else is pending, it still shows pending today. So we'll see what that will be. We'll notify the board once we know that number, you know, closer. But until then, we had to use the other estimate. So then you'll see here the comparisons of the budget between the two years, the assessed valuation, the property taxes, and then the tax rate. So of course, when I talked about earlier, when your AV goes up, your tax rate goes down because there's a maximum levy here. So in that formula, you'll look back through that little one that had the green around it. That's why the tax rate will go lower on this because the AV went up. AV goes up, tax rate goes down because your levy will, will end up staying right in the middle then, because those two numbers added together then is what the maximum property tax we can get for this fund. So that's why it shows a lower rate at this time because the assessed valuation went up. Now, the homeowner would see approximately the same thing because their assessed valuation went up, but the rate went down. So they both level out and would have approximately the same for this fund. And then you'll see also a part of the operations fund is the capital projects plan. So this is one portion of the capital projects plan. There's two different ones. One is projects, the other is equipment and things like that. So you'll see the totals of this for each of the three years. It's a three-year plan. However, we're only held to the one year. So every year you can do, you can update those other two years as needed, as things change throughout the district. So you'll see some of the items that, that were, were turned in for these capital needs on this side and then also on the other one. This is the one that I wanted the board to really pay attention to. So these are the needs that we wanted, that were turned in for the district for all the capital projects. Of course, you know, we have tons of stuff, our facility study showed. There's tons of stuff that we need to do. So on this list is one of those where we list anything that we can that we may take out of the operations fund. That doesn't mean we have to take it all out, but it needs to be on this list if it's over ten thousand dollars. However, you'll see all these wants or needs on this list. We won't be able to fund all those. So that's what I wanted to make clear to the board that, you know, as you go through your work sessions and the general obligation bonds and the leases, you always pick like a priority list. So I wanted to make sure that you had all the things on this in case then in the future, whenever you want to do those, they're on this list and you don't have to worry about it later. And we've kind of run into that the last couple of years going, well, gosh, we really wish we could buy this equipment or do this. So I wanted to list everything to give you guys that flexibility to do what you want to do each of the years as you discuss and as needs arise. So that's why I just wanted to point that out, that we wouldn't fund all of these, but it gives you the variety to be able to pick and choose what you do want to do when you come to that, that state and that year of each one of these three-year plans. And then next we have the bus replacement plan that's also done on the operations fund. So this is a five-year plan of the buses that would be up for replacement. And you'll see here, over the next couple of years, we're trying to build this up because we were so far behind on our bus replacement plan. However, we have to be very careful, like we talked about. The operations fund, where this comes from, has those new property taxes, all that stuff that will be coming. Your lit will be going away. So we're going to be very careful on this, especially come in 2028. So between our facility needs and then our bus replacement needs, we'll have to manage both of those to see what we can do that year. So just because this is on here doesn't mean that we have to do every one of those that's listed. We can't do more, but we can do less if needed in that particular year. So then this is the other, the first one was the first three years and this is the last two years. And then you'll see the totals down there at the bottom of what's built into the budget at this time for the bus replacement plan. And then next, the next steps you'll see going through here, all this information, you'll see the top portion there. This is what I have to do behind the scenes after all this information is gathered. These are the forms that go into the Department of Local from Nance. So this is all the things that after we have those numbers, I put all these special forms together. It does a calculation in the middle, what's called a Form 4B. And that gives us those tax rates, the estimated tax rates or levies or property taxes. So it does all that. And then our outputs are all of our forms that will go through these board meetings over these next couple more board meetings. So you'll see all that information. And then next you'll see, these are the estimates. So this is our Form Three Notice to Taxpayers that we'll go over in a little bit. But these are just the totals from, from those forms and it also has our, our transfer in there from our education fund to our operations. So you'll see that in there for our budget estimates. And then also on the next one, you will see our different, our estimated levies, our property taxes for each of the funds. And you'll see there, of course, we did not do anything for education fund because it's not a levy property tax fund. And we did not allocate anything for, out of the rainy day fund for 2026. However, if the board so chooses later in 2026, if you have needs that you need or want to take out of the rainy day fund, then you can do what's called an additional appropriation process. But at this time, that's what I heard, is that we did not want to do anything automatically out of the rainy day fund. So we kept that at zero for this budget year. And then talking about those, the next steps also. So we advertise on the, the DLGF site, the Gateway site. And that is the Indiana data website for everyone to look at. And then we also advertise on our district's website. And we advertise our bus replacement plan, our capital projects plan, and our Form Three Notice to Taxpayers. And we have to advertise those and they must be advertised for a minimum of ten days before our next step, which is our public hearing that we're going to have on September 22nd. So I'll be submitting these first thing tomorrow morning on all of the Gateway websites. And then I'll also have Cindy work with our marketing to have those advertised on our website also tomorrow. And then our second steps, of course, will be September 22nd, where we hold our public hearings. And we have to hold three separate public hearings. One on the actual 2026 budget for the major budget of funds, all, another one on our capital projects plan, and then the third one on our bus replacement plan. And then on, in our October board meeting, that's when we ask the board to adopt all the budgets. And we have different forms at that time. One is called a Form Four, that's the main one, our capital projects plan, our bus replacement plan, and some other various resolutions that we'll do at that time also, according to state statute. And these are just talking about that again. What we do after all that, then they, they mess with every school in Indiana. They sit there and do all the calculations behind the scenes. They're doing all of those for each county. And then what they give us is what's called a seventeen eighty-two notice. So that's a draft budget of all those calculations that they present to the school district. We look over those with a fine-tooth comb because they're human, just like us, and they've made mistakes where they might leave off a debt service, one of those schedules that we talked about. So we, once we receive that draft seventeen eighty-two notice, we have ten days to review it line by line to make sure everything was what we anticipated it to be. And then we respond back with, yes, we accept it as is, or nope, oops, you forgot one of our debt services. And that's happened several times for both districts that I've worked at. So we will get that as soon as all that is finalized from us, any kind of corrections or changes or accept as is. Then what they, by state statutes, they have to certify our budgets by December 31st. So, so that is the plan for the 2026 budgets. I think that's the last one. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of information, workshops, a lot of, lot of data and details, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
So in the past, we only had one person inputting data and that has been us at some point. Do you have anybody in the business office validating your numbers after you put them in just to make sure everything looks good?
Absolutely. I, I run through this, of course, with the superintendent. And then also currently, I was working with the COO and the Director of Finance and the Corporation Treasurer.
Multiple eyes, that's important.
Any other questions?
Questions or comments for Becky? Well done. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll move on then to C2, Permission to Advertise 2026 Budget Form Three. Ms. Smith?
Sure. As part of the steps, this is the main requirement one where Cindy, I think she'll pull that up. I don't know if you have that ready. If not, it is in your board packet. So the Form Three is simply those numbers that we just went over in the budget workshop. And it, it shows the budgets that we're advertising and then those levies, those two different pages that we just went over. And then it also shows when our budget hearing will be and when our adoption will be. So that is what we will advertise on the district's website and also the Gateway website. And then also those pages that you saw from the capital projects plan, same thing. The notice to taxpayers telling when we're going to hold the public hearings. And then the information from those two different pages where it showed the equipment over ten thousand dollars that we may utilize our operations fund for, from. And then also any kind of projects over ten thousand dollars that we're only using the operations fund for. That does not include projects that we already are doing out of our bonds or leases. So here you'll see that notice to taxpayers at Form Three, where it shows our public hearing information, the dates, and also the adoption for, for all of that. So then you'll see also the, the numbers there. You'll see the notice to taxpayers there on the capital projects plans and all that. And then, I think that's the, that one, I can't remember which one those are. I can't see that far, sorry. The bus replacement and the capital projects plan. So you'll see all of that posted on the Gateway website and also on our district website.
So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. The stuff that we had talked about at our work session and, and that stuff, that doesn't have to be listed in the projects, capital projects plan, or does it?
The ones for the bonds and leases do not.
Okay.
So your capital projects plan is only, gives you the opportunity to spend those projects out of the operations fund if you have the funds. So that's why we listed all that big old list in case you want to take any of those out of your operations fund. If you're doing those out of your debt service fund, which is your bonds and leases, you don't have to have them on there. And you might have some on there that you plan on doing later. And that's fine, too. It gives you that, that variety to be able to do, pick and choose from which one you want to do. It's better to have too much on your capital projects plan and be able to have the opportunity to take it out of your operations fund than to not have it listed and not be able to do the project because you didn't have it listed there.
On the F3 form, it shows the, the address to be, for the location via the administration.
Yeah, I see that. I just saw that. So before that's posted, yeah, I just saw that. I don't know why that would have defaulted. Because that's a default, but we will make sure it's changed.
If it's not corrected, then it won't be eligible if it's not in the right location, correct?
Correct. It would be, but there's correction, I, I need to refrain from saying that. But there is ways to do it. But before this gets, the button gets pushed, we'll make sure for some reason they had that, that address, which I think is weird that they would have that address automatically in your Form Three under Gateway. But I will make sure that I override that and get the right address on that. Because I saw it come up right when she did that, I was like, hmm. But we'll get that corrected before I hit that button tomorrow morning. And I'll give you a new one, Cindy, to be able to do, because I can override that in the system.
Good catch, Erin. Thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, reference item C2.
Make a recommendation, a recommendation to approve the advertisement of the 2026 budget, Form Three Bus Replacement Capital Projects Plans, with the exception of fixing the address on Form Three as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Any further questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We'll move on to item D, one through 10, Consent Agenda. Mr. Trout?
Yes, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Smith. As always, that's very impressive. And so I'm grateful for all the work that you have put into this and for your work with us in the past. I have just absolutely great confidence in you and what you provide for us each year. So thank you. Board, I want to draw your attention to item number seven. One of our local partners is, we're blessed, to say the least, with our fire and rescue independent contractors. These are firemen in our community who give of their time in efforts to invest back into our community, into our kids. And so I had the great opportunity to watch these, one of these gentlemen in action and, and our kids are fortunate to have such professionals in our community investing in them. So I gladly recommend your approval for that. The other one that I just want to draw a highlight to is the Title II Funding Professional Development Summer Training Stipends. We just need to make a couple of clarifications in that. And so that's just working on a couple of, of those clarifications. But I am seeking your approval of items D, one through 10.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. We're going to adjourn and make a motion, reference the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Heim. Any questions or comments before we, before we vote? I would like to just also mention in the request to accept donations, Sam and Brenda Wright made a contribution to the fire class that they have at the Learning Center to purchase four sets of boots for the firefighters during the class. Thousand bucks doesn't sound like much, but boy, I'll tell you, it makes a big difference for that class. And, and I know they weren't able to be here tonight and asked me if I could say a little something about how grateful they were to be able to make that type of contribution. So God bless them. Any other further comments or questions? Let's vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to item E1, Administrative Guideline 6550, Travel Payment and Reimbursement.
Yes, Board, this is just the first reading. It does not take any action this evening. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns about this administrative guideline, please let me know ahead of next board meeting. I highlighted for you that the one significant change in this administrative guidelines is on D. We needed to specify that gratuities cannot exceed the twenty percent mark. And so that's the only true change in this, but one that we needed to clarify. So, Mr. Allen, this is just the first reading, but if anybody has any questions or comments about this before the next meeting, don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Any questions or comments, references item?
On that twenty percent gratuity, is that only on the transportation portion of?
On that 20% gratuity, is that only on the transportation portion of it?
There is also, this is just the one, that's just the travel payment and reimbursement, and so when you read that in there, this is just for the travel part itself. If you go down to meals for F, you'll notice there that the maximum per day includes that gratuity, so it matches, okay? And then we also specify the maximum per day for meals also, and so we're just making sure that this one matches, and B, that we're clarifying both sides of this equation for travel, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Carl, thank you, Mr. Trout. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to item F1, Items Discussion by Board Members, anybody got anything they'd like to share?
All right, Tim. Just remind everybody that Saturday is our car show, classic car show out there at the campground. Proceed from all that, come back to Huntington County to blessings in a backpack to feed our kids or everybody in this. School corporate has a nice classic car, needs to bring it out by 10:00, 10:30 and...
That is a great cause.
A good cause, very, very good cause. 100% of it comes back here.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Anything else?
I had the privilege of attending the girls' flag football game on, I believe it was Wednesday the 3rd last week. It was a fun time if you have a chance, and they only have three home games, and that was their first one, so if you have a chance, stop by, it's a great time, it's two 25-minute running halves, and it's a, it's kind of fun to watch, so.
Are they playing at the stadium?
Yeah, they played at the stadium, it was great, and it was just a fun time, and really doesn't take that much time, but it's fun, fun time.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anybody else? I will move on to item G1, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Carl, all those in favor, seeing probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody's opposed.